Waking up here got seven o'clock, so we will, we have a quorum here and perhaps one joining us online. We'll begin the meeting. Pledge of allegiance. All right. Thank you all for being here this morning. We are now open for district guidelines for public comment. I don't believe there were any public comments mailed in. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Okay, great. We do have an audience here this morning and we will move directly into our study session item, items, I should say. The first is the student data report from Hunter Sisson. Hunter is getting prepared here.
400 jumps in. I'll start real quick with what we had hoped to accomplish through the course of the year. Especially with the I ready data. It seemed like you in previous years. You were kind of left without it being finished in a way, and so we had to come back at the beginning of the next school year and catch you up to the last of the I ready. Assessment datas, and so this time just happened to work out, and I think it hopefully will be. Beneficial to is you'll be able to to see the whole picture of all the way through the entire assessment window, all four. For Hunter has given four reports on student data through the course of the year, so hopefully this will continue and then you'll be able to see at the very end. For each of the buildings about the growth that was made. I'm hoping that this will kind of meet one of those goals that we had. Established, I think, a couple of years ago that we have continual data focus throughout the year. And Alicia started that and then Hunter has definitely taken it over. So this will be the fourth in report. Provided this school year with regards to our student data and he's got today, he's going to go over I ready data. And then our some behavior data as well. All yours, Hunter.
I thank you. I was trying to, the clicker I think was out of battery, so I'm going to use the mouse for today. So like Kevin said, the data we're going to be going over that you've seen before, but this is kind of where all of our schools ended with data for the year. I'm going to go over growth by content in school. I'll have both contents on a slide for each school. And then do final results by a kind of achievement for I ready. Behavior data, which is just a big overview for a few different data points for our behavioral, like Swiss data. And then a few kind of just data points on the class of two thousand twenty five that graduated. The cadence will be start the youngest and go oldest throughout. So that's kind of what we'll be following. This is growth. For Robert Lince on the left is reading, on the right is math. You can see this is with a dividing line between the two contents here in the middle of the screen. One caveat to Lince, they don't take this at the beginning of the year. They have the walk kids assessment. Kids aren't necessarily used to taking assessments online, so we don't do I ready learning, I ready assessment in the fall for for Lince. They take it in the January to February window. So growth is really what this would more look like about a third of the way through the year because they take it. End it in February and they take it again relatively quickly in May. So we're not expecting to see a hundred percent growth because they only have a. A few months and the growth is based off of where their initial placement was to where their the last assessment was taken. So you can see this bar up top is typical growth on the left. We want to see about a third of the way through the school year or that we would want to see about a third, a third thirty three percent typical growth. This is again, remember the median students. So if we lined up all students in a line. The middle student, how much did they grow compared to what we would typically grow a year and typical growth is what is. What we, what is norm for all students to grow within one school year, like one year's growth. Stretch growth is what we would want to see if like a year and a thirds growth. Like so going, growing beyond what would be just a typical in a year. That makes sense. Generally what we want to see at the bottom, we, this is students who have met a hundred percent of their typical growth. Again, Lince is going to be hard to kind of have this be a true measure because they, it wasn't a full years assessment for them. So I'll jump to JCP now. JCP, you can see in reading, the median student had a hundred seven percent typical growth. So the middle student grew more than we would. We would typically see within a school year. So that's, that's good. We want to see a hundred percent on typical growth or more. And in math, the median student grew ninety seven percent. So right up to a really close to hundred percent. This is the distribution of the bands of how much growth students made on the far, what we want to see is most of our students on the far right. Most of our students making, meeting their hundred percent typical growth. And we would generally what we, what we want to see or we typically see is a, like a cell phone graph where it's the most at the hundred percent. A little bit smaller eighty percent kind of going down. We, we want to see our smallest bar being on the ones students who grew the least amount. If that makes sense. Going on to sis now sis is growth, the median student. Gosh, this is, this is small to read. I'm going to look at my laptop. This is median typical growth, progress towards typical growth. Sorry, one second. Was a hundred and three percent. So again, passing that, well, we, hundred percent is kind of the bar we go for. So in reading, we've made. Really great progress at sis and at JCP. Math is at eighty five percent. So this is one that's a little bit lower. We, we want to be within at least a few percentage points. Of a hundred percent typical growth, and this is a little bit lower than what we would want to expect. Then dropping down to see kind of the, the distribution, we have a lot of students making, that met their typical growth for the year. But then this is not, we don't want to see the goalpost here. We don't want our second biggest graph, bar, bar on the graph to be students making minimal growth. So that's something we're going to, our assist team is going to dive into. Middle school had a lot to celebrate within their reading growth, their, their, their median student made a hundred fifty percent of typical growth for the year. That's huge. And that's a different from the past within our middle school. The one concerning element here is that their, their bargain, their distribution is even more. Polarized where a lot of students made, made their expected growth for a year and beyond. But we also, our next biggest graph, bar on this graph is students who made little growth. So middle school insists are both kind of. Are diving into today, actually our admin team when we have our admin retreat. To look, to look at some of these factors, what could be causing this and who are those students? Because it's not always a one for one, just because they were far behind doesn't mean that they were the students who were not making growth. Now jumping into actual like the achievement placement of where students ended in relation to their grade level standards. This is Robert Lince's reading. We had. Almost sixty percent of students at grade level within reading. At Robert Lince kindergarten, you can see the actual skills of breakdown. These skills are foundational. They build on themselves. So the. First skills phonological awareness is the first skills that we teach within kindergarten and then they get more and more. Complex skills as we go along. So it goes into phonics, then high frequency words vocabulary and then comprehension. JCP reading, they are at. Forty seven percent on grade level. You can see also where they started the year. They started at thirty four percent. So we see, we generally want to see green get bigger, yellow get smaller, red get smaller, and that's what this graph is showing as well. Same skills below that's assessed as was in kindergarten. This, this is the first year where there is the, the dark red bar in the far right where there's two or more grade levels below. Because they have multiple, they have that many grade levels below. Where Lince doesn't have great levels, so the yellow is the, is the lowest we would see. Again, where they started thirty three percent on grade level and they got up to forty one percent. Again, we want to see yellow get smaller, green get bigger, red get smaller and we're seeing that. So we're seeing growth across each school. SMS reading, where they started. Was thirty seven percent on grade level and ended at forty one percent on grade level. Going into math. Lince ended at fifty seven, fifty seven percent on grade level, starting at twenty nine percent. Again, remember they took this assessment, the first, the first iteration was, was in January, February timeline. JCP math. Starting at twenty two percent and got up to forty one percent on grade level by the end of the year. This is math data, starting at. Twenty five percent ended at thirty nine percent on grade level. Again, looking at the yellow and red to get shrinking. That's, that's our goal. Our, our goal going to next year is how can we expedite even more having those bars gets smaller quicker. One, one caveat to sis, I mentioned this last time when I presented I ready data. They altered the timeline of when they took the I ready assessment. So generally we take it in the fall very early in September. And then we take it mid, middle of the year in September and, I'm sorry, not September, in February and we take it again in May. What we have found is it's, it makes the springtime very, very heavy on assessments with SBA. And so sis made the decision to bump up their middle of year. Assessment and their end of year assessment to take it earlier. Which the other schools next year are interested in as well because it's just, it's a lot for students to be taking all at once in May. We're, we're really losing a month of instruction where kids are just assessing on a computer. The, the benefits of that are that we spread that out more and we have data that we can use more quickly, like coming out of winter break to, to do interventions and extensions. The one thing that will change is that we're taking the assessment earlier or at the end of the year than we typically would. So now all learning is done. So we're predicting that our I ready assessments data will look a little different go in future years. And then, but then we can use the SBA data as a true summative assessment and have that be our final data point. And the reason I'm not presenting on SBA today is it's, it's all preliminary. So I want to present it as final data. So I'll do that. Early on either late, late summer or early on in the, in the school year next year when we have that finalized data. SMS math. Started at twenty three percent on grade level, ended at thirty percent. Again, the yellow and red bars are what we want to see shrink and they did, although nominally. So that was our I ready data. Do you have any questions over any of that?
What are some common trends between all the, all the schools that you're seeing, Hunter?
Common trends. JC, well, I would say JCP had the most kind of typical even distribution of growth. Which is what we want to see. I think the trends that we see are. There's kids who are not making much growth and there are kids that are making a ton and not a lot in the middle. So we, we want to more evenly distribute that. We'd like to see, you know, students making sixty percent of typical growth is better than making ten percent, right? So I think that we need to dive in and study a little more on what is happening for our students who are just making little growth. Last time when I presented, a lot of it was students who were already at or above grade level. And that, that is something that we're diving into with some of our high cap programming and talking about how can we make it. More rigorous and actually provide true extensions within, within every single day, not just one off extensions, but how do we truly. Differentiate for students who have already mastered the grade level skills. So that's, that's probably the trend I see most and using kind of John Campbell to. Because they've, they've shown the most growth for those students that are already at grade level to see what are they doing differently than some of our other schools?
Is, are there any programs that we instituted, say this year or maybe within the last couple of years that are especially promising in terms of. Their results with growth? With, I'm thinking.
Sure.
School wide or.
Yeah.
Even grade level.
So in our, in our, for our elementary schools, our, our core curriculum is American Reading Company. It's a great program. The one and with any, with any curriculum, no, there's not one perfect curriculum out there that meets the needs of, of, of all, of, of a school district. Oh, what our early, our primary grade levels found is it was lighter on phonological awareness and phonics. So we supplemented that with Hagerty and Saxton, their two curriculums that focus more heavily on that and we've embedded that. This is our. Third year now at Lince doing that and our second year at John Campbell. So what, and what we've seen is that those skills are, are both for phonics and phonological awareness are. Not as big of a concern. If years passed, we looked at I ready phonological awareness, we had, we had read, a lot of read in that. So our students who are far behind didn't have those foundational reading skills. We're seeing that kind of be repaired with this, the new curriculum. And that's why I think John Campbell's data looks the way it does because Lince did that for the kindergartners that came through and then they're, as they go through first, second grade. They're, they're, they're doing, and then that way then, once they get the sis in third grade and fourth grade. We're not having to go back and reteach foundational skills that might not have ever been taught. And so our kids going through, I'm, I'm interested to see what the third grade group for next year, what their literacy data will look like. And that, it's been a big success that coming through. Our teachers have really appreciated because it was definitely a gap within our, our curriculum.
And you can probably use this data, once we continue to be consistent in using it in this manner, you can probably use it a couple of different ways to track. Classes coming through that's getting extra support in a subject. But then over time, you can probably see also maybe a building that struggles with a certain portion of the.
Absolutely.
Curriculum or.
Yeah. And what I would like to do in the future as a personal goal for, for me, for you guys is to do some type of longitudinal kind of. To track a, a grade level to show growth over time and to show. What, rather than just doing what third grade was this year and then third grade was next year, because that's, those are different students, but where do they start? And then as they're progressing through the system, what are we seeing all the way throughout? Yeah, yeah. It's, it's hard to do for every single grade level. It would be, that would be like a, probably a three or four hour data session with you guys. And I don't know if you guys would appreciate that too much, but I'm, that's my, one of my goals for next year is to find the just right. Data presentation to, to highlight that.
Great. Thank you, Hunter.
Okay. Now I'm going to jump into the, these are, this is data pulled directly from Swiss. I pulled it just the other day. So it doesn't have the last two days of school. Yeah. So Swiss is our, how we track behavioral referrals. This is any and all behavioral referrals are on this. This is not necessarily the school discipline. It can be. Our formal school discipline is entered into Skyward. This is any and all behavioral infractions that could happen with, within a school day. Generally, we, we track these. That way we can develop plans if we're seeing trends for a student or a grade level or a school and address those. As we see patterns start to show up. So. This is, yeah, this, this is per school. Yeah. So I'll explain a little bit. This, I'm going to move this to the side if I can do that. The top bar graph is average referrals per day, per month. So you can see. Which months were a little bit heavier with behavior than others. And this is, this takes into account how many months we're in, how many actual school days we're in that month. So this is Robert Lince's data. So that's the top bar graph. This is by time. We do see patterns. Depending on development on age level, what, what parts of the day are hardest for students? This is referrals by location. So you can see for Lince, they're, they're where behavioral concerns happen the most, we're in the classroom. Pretty typical for five and six year olds as they're learning how to do school, that, that would be the, the number one location. This is by day of the week. You can't quite see, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So Mondays are our highest referrals. Again, pretty typical, we see in kindergarten, coming out of the weekend, getting back into routine. And this is by behavior. You're not going to be able to read all this. At our younger levels, physical aggression is, and this, that's a very broad term. This, you know, it could be pushing, could be hitting. Those are, that was our number one referral reason for Robert Lince's data. One thing with these graphs, they are, I can't set them to stay the same metric on the side. So you'll need to really pay attention to. To the numbers on, on each graph because they do change per school, if that makes sense. So like in September for, for Robert Lince, you can see it was about five referrals per day average. We also, this is including all major referrals, so anything that would, that would potentially be disciplined, but also minor referrals, something that. Doesn't necessarily need a response, but the teacher wants to track it and document it to make sure that if it becomes a pattern, we can address it. And, and support the student. JCP's data, referrals per day, per month. A little bit higher in September. That was their heaviest month. But in generally what we want to see, we'd like to see this trending down as school goes along. We see less referrals per day. Students become acclimated to the routines and the procedures. And the system, the kind of the behavioral response system we have set up. They again have their, their two highest referrals by location at JCP were both the classroom and the playground. That's typically what we see. In, in our younger grades. Referrals by day of the week. Nothing really stands out too much. Friday is, is one of our lowest days at John Campbell. And then the highest behavior was minor physical aggression. So this could be just like a disagreement. Maybe got too rough playing on the playground. Minors are, you know, not the ones that would be anything discipline related, but like. Cross the boundary a little bit here. And each of our schools has, has a flow chart that defines what is a minor versus what is a major. This is data. You can see, this is why I wanted you to, to really queue in that the numbers are, are, are different by school. They were processing a lot of behavioral refers, referrals this year. You can see there in September, they were processing about eighteen referrals per day. And it did trend down, especially towards the end of the year, but it was higher than our other schools. And that's something that shouldn't be a surprise. Our third grade cohort has different behavioral needs than the rest of our cohorts and they were, I was really proud of the assist team of, of how they persevered. And the students too, the students showed a lot of growth, but and our system started to take hold because we did start to see fewer referrals per day. Classroom and playground again were the two highest location referrals. The highest referral behavior was minor for physical aggression. So again, nothing that would warrant. Major discipline, but was definitely something that wanted to be documented and noted. Middle schools referrals per day. Similar, a little bit less than sis, they were, their high watermark was in September was a little over sixteen referrals per day in that month. Their, their highest was in classroom and gym. Their, their highest referral, this is where it changes developmentally. Was a minor disruption, blurting out, potentially talking too much in class. The other thing that's both the secondary schools, they document or middle school specifically, they document if the Chromebook's not charged. That's, and for middle school students, that happens quite often. And so are, the referrals are somewhat inflated there, but they wanted a way to kind of document that. So that way then, if they needed a student to, to leave their Chromebook at, at school and, and, and leave it in a. The, the charging case at school because it's a habitual issue for a student, they can track that. So these generally at middle school behavior this year was, was, was relatively calm. Oh, sorry, that's just, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at middle school on my computer. I'm toggling back and forth. Sorry. This is middle school's data that I was just talking through.
Can you go back eighteen until take one of those months?
You click that, I can go backwards there. Yeah.
What, what, what's the number on the month this year? This is September.
This is September was at eighteen referrals per day.
So eighteen referrals today, per day for close to eight hundred kids or more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just to put it in context, we're talking about every student in that school.
Correct.
And eighteen.
Yeah, these are total referrals.
For that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So eighteen referrals per day for, yeah, I think it's about eight hundred and forty students at sis this year. Yes.
And then we can further break down this data and see that certain students are.
Yeah, I don't have that here today, but what we see, especially at sis is our, the referrals are made up predominantly of. Ten to fifteen students make up ninety percent of our referrals. So it's a, it's a small, it's a small portion. It's not. I would say our students who struggle, who have struggled with behavior at sis was not a. School wide issue. It's, it's, it's students that have documented need. We see a high level of disability in one of our cohorts coming through that show a different need and behavior. But it's not a, where every single student is, is struggling with behavior.
Has there become a compounding consequence for repeat offender of a referral?
Yeah, yeah. So, and sis has built a difference, additional system to, to support our students who, who have. Continually struggled and with some of the more concerning behaviors, behaviors that are unsafe. Where it's called a reset process, where it's more of a, a, a smaller environment. Or it's very structured and they have to earn their way back into their general A class setting. And it's, it's based off of a point system where they have to show that they're being safe and responsible and doing their work and. They have to have so many days where they have earned their points and then they start to transition back with their peers. That, that is a new system that was built partway through the year based off of the need we were seeing at sis. And it, and it was probably around, it was in January when we implemented that, I believe. And that's where you started to see some of our, for like, that's really in February is when we started to see referrals go down. Because it was addressing our students who were struggling the most. It wasn't perfect, but it, it did start to take hold and, and that will continue going into next year at sis.
I'm, I'm interested also to see how the hallway reconfiguration with older students modeling of behavior.
Yeah.
How that affects the numbers next year. I'm, I'm, I'm remembering, I've looked it up that. The fifth graders had a fifty eight percent drop in referrals compared to last year at SIS. Maybe that's just that cohort, but it could be that as they, as they get a little bit older, they, they start to mature a little bit.
Absolutely. Yeah, right. And that's generally why we see, you know, physical aggression is something we see with younger kids. It's, they don't have. The, the vocabulary always to settle conflicts with their words. They don't have the. They're, they're more impulsive when they're younger, right? And so that's, as kids mature, we do see some of those behaviors change and the behavior. As they progress and go into middle school and later on my elementary. Okay, I get my bearings here to see, make sure I'm matching my laptop with my. So high school, this is their, their chart looks a little bit different. And their biggest referrals, I'll start with location rather by month are bathroom and class, and classroom. And their number one referral is skipping. Skipping is by far and away, that's the, on the bottom right, that is. The one that they try to address most often. And that is not necessarily skipping off campus. That's what's considered major. If they leave campus, it's skipping, it's, they're just not going to class. They're hiding in the bathrooms. Which. Sounds gross to me. Like, I don't know why I'd want to hang out in the bathroom for an hour, but that's something that their team has addressed. We saw a spike in that. In high school, we do see this with senioritis. Where, and, and during testing season, we see, that's why April, there was a, a, a bigger jump in referrals there. And let me see what else I want to highlight here. So yeah, that was the, April was an anomaly in that regard. We saw a lot more skipping happen. That's where most of the referrals were. Generally, it was a really calm, safe year at, at the high school. Not a lot of majors in incidents. Very few fights throughout the year.
Hunter, at the high school, they, two years ago instituted a. I don't remember what it's called. There's some system that they have for, a card system for leaving class.
Minga.
Minga, that's it. That's being used this year as well.
Correct. And that, so that is how they. Allow students to kind of, it's their passes to go if they need to go outside of class. And if they are outside of class, they're checked in through Minga and then automatically updates with like, to our attendance system to let, let teachers know that if they were tardy, if there was unexcused. Or if they had a Minga pass, then it automatically excuses them being tardy. If they had to go to the counseling office or see another teacher. Yeah.
And did the high school staff feel like, or the administration feel like that's been a helpful tool for them?
It's been super helpful. And as, as they've learned it more, they've added on to it. So they, it's also how they do their kind of school wide reinforcement where they do Minga praises. Kids can earn points there and then turn that in at the, at the store to buy, buy food. Yeah.
And hanging out in the bathroom. A, a part of what's interesting is the CTE program of the expansion of it is kind of meant to. Have kids find something that they're really excited about to go to school with. There's still obviously some population of kids that are. Not as connected to something that they really care about, that will make them want to go to class and instead skip out on some things. I'm, 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 hopefully we can reach those kids, I guess I would say. I'm, 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 hopefully we can reach those kids, I guess I would say. We've also installed a lot of technology for I guess smoking cessation or vaping cessation.
Yeah.
Catch kids doing that and increased monitoring of the bathrooms. Is that
Yeah.
decreasing some of that bathroom referrals, or is that increasing the bathroom?
No. So I think it was last year, two years ago and last year, I think our biggest concern was vaping. We have seen that drop pretty drastically this year. Is, was there still issue? Yes, there were still times in kids who were caught vaping or had substances on them at school. But it was drastically less. I could pull that data, pull that data for, and present that to you guys. I think looking longitudinally to over, over time, a cohort would make sense for behavioral data too. But I, I think our systems of monitoring in the bathrooms, generally the skipping this year was just kids not going to class. And again, it was a handful of kids. It's not, it's kind of repeat offenders, not necessarily that it was a rampant issue across the whole school. And usually, this is not up here, but it's our, our freshman that, that we see skipping more until the end of the school year when kids are, the seniors feel like, hey, we're, I'm all done. Graduation's a month away. I don't need to go to class. That's typically what, why we saw a spike in, in, in April and in the spring.
I, I just think it is interesting to see, I don't even want to call them trends, but to see some of the things that we implement having effects positively.
Absolutely.
Or, or if they're not working, to be able to tell that. And it seems like the vaping one, we haven't heard it.
Yeah.
We haven't had anything on that.
There's probably some truth to that. Yeah. I do think, I mean, I think it has gotten better. It's just not something that we are seeing and we have such a great engagement team and, or, or behavior support team in all of our schools. Where they are monitored, I mean, they have, they're, they're monitoring sweeping bathrooms, sweeping the hallways constantly. So it's really hard for students to, to hide it. And especially with some of the systems they don't know about in regards to the bathroom monitoring. I also think our, our, our SAP positions and our mental health counselor position has helped get students support who need it that are before it's, before it really truly is a substance addiction issue. We've done more preventative ways to, to get students support when they show early signs of substance use and abuse.
Are we still, are we going to be able to hold on to those supports from the ESD?
Yes.
Wow, fantastic. Great.
The last data slide I have for you is just, I mean, I, I think to celebrate our seniors that graduated a little over a week ago, such an awesome class. We had 264 total students graduate on, on June 7th. I didn't put the total number of students up there, but our graduation rate was super high. Only a few students did not make it through the end. We will have a few more that will finish in summer school. And then to, to, this is our, our preliminary final post-secondary plans. You can see the majority of our students have some type of plan of a post-secondary. We have, with 11% going straight to work and 6% just undecided, but that is, you know, over 80% of our students have some, where they're going on to some type of post-secondary learning for themselves. And what we've seen from our data in the past is our students who do go on to post-secondary persevere and they, they complete post-second, their post-secondary plans at a higher rate than, than schools across the state. So I, that's a huge celebration. We are preparing our students to be successful after high school. And, and we're doing, this, this year's class is doing at a higher rate. They're, they're going on to bigger and better things. Yeah.
Hunter mentioned some things about students who, who didn't make the graduation. And so there is accountability there. You have to meet local and state graduation requirements. And simply if you do not, you don't go through the ceremony. But those students will have opportunities to get their diploma. Some of them will complete and they're probably working on it right now and will work on it through the, through the summer until they get to the point where they have met the state or local graduation requirements. And then we'll have some that will need an extra year. They'll need the fifth year in order to get that. And so we still, still continue to push, still continue to engage in, in, in our attempts to get them a high school diploma. But those students of 6264 who walked across the stage did meet everything. They had all completed all of state and local. But we still have responsibilities for those other smaller numbers of students to get those, get them through as well.
Does the fifth year look like? Do they, are they in the high school or is it an outside line situation?
Either, it could be either, depending on how, how far, how much they need to complete before. The open doors is also, our GED program is, is an option too. I'd say most probably do online. Because they do that in summer school and summer school is a way that they can finish credits. If they have a few more, rather than coming back for, for a full semester to earn credits. If they're, if they're only a few classes away, they would finish, we'd see students finish online. If they're kind of in the middle, I, we would see students come back for a fifth year in person. But just, it really is dependent on the student and their, their transcript and what their credit situation looks like.
We may have a student that's during their freshman year, for whatever reason was going on in their life, they may have, may have accumulated one to two credits. Well, it's going to be very difficult for them to get themselves back on track totally. And they may need a full year and they may have another year with us. Some of those students come to us, move into the district and come to us very credit deficient. And they just spend an additional year or additional trimester to get what they need to get done.
Hunter, I, I'm going to give you my quick summary. Good at reading, okay at math?
I'd say that's accurate. Uh, yes, I'd say that's accurate.
Good growth overall, still too many before, below grade level.
Correct. Yep.
Um, and referrals down generally, behavior improved this year because of some of the systems been put in place.
Yeah.
Okay, good. That helps. Those are the big bullet points. How do we, how do we get the, the still too many below grade level, right? There's this, this issue where they, either they enter below grade level or below, you know, readiness for kindergarten. And then there's this persistence of it or for students traveling through the system where they're, they're in fifth grade, but they're doing, you know, they're at fourth grade level or they're in seventh grade and they're at fifth grade level. That's just got to be a really, a huge challenge for us, right?
Yeah. Yeah. That, that's our biggest concern. It's our, it is, it is a big challenge. It's also a challenge that we see across, across other districts too. I think our, our data for districts with our demographics looks relatively similar. We're a little bit higher, we're higher in some areas, we're lower in other areas. Literacy, our focus has been literacy throughout the time I've been in CLEB. And that's been intentional because in order to do higher level math, you also have to be literate. So I, it is a celebration that our, our reading and our literacy scores are, we're making more growth there. We're showing higher achievement there. I would be more concerned if our, because that's been a more of our, more of our focus, if it was the inverse, right? If our reading scores were, were more depressed than our math scores. But yeah, it is a, that, that's, going back to the CSL, the PLC process is the tried and true method of what do we do when students have learned it? What do we do if they've not learned it? And being really following that with fidelity with all of our teachers and really being clear on what standards are we teaching to make sure they are, because we only have so many days with students. And some students don't attend a lot. And so we need to, every minute, every second counts in the classroom and we need to make sure that we're using that on the most essential learning for our kids.
So you hit some of the big points that I wanted to, I wanted to just highlight, which is that this is a trend that is national trend. Regional obviously, but national as well. And we only have so many days with students. And I would just put a plug in for increased funding from the state and federal level for summer school, extended school years. Not necessarily balanced school years, although I think there's some merit to that, but extended school years. From what I understand of the research nationally, it's intensive work, especially giving it extra time for students over that summer period that really makes catch up.
Yeah.
Like if you look at Louisiana, for instance, they've had some huge results by investing a lot in giving those students a lot more time.
And that is something, you know, last, we, funding for summer school has dropped the past few years with state budgets. So last, it's been last, last year, we ran a really small summer school. This year, same, same thing. There's just not funding for it. We, for whatever reason, the one thing we do see more, I see more in CLEB than I have in other, we do from other districts is our summer slide. Something I referred to at the very beginning of the year, where students ended their school year and then where they start in the fall. Our slide seems to be kids fall back further. They're having to re, you know, kind of relearn and get back up to just where they ended. That's part of the, the problem. Like, so how do we keep kids maintaining their learning over the summer? So that way when they come back, we're not having to go back a few months on previous learning and, and spending time within their current grade level year on standards and teaching that is, is not at the grade level.
Well, that was, I don't miss anything about COVID, but I missed that we had summer school programs that were robust during that S R period. That was really good. I, I thank you for your report. Any, any other questions for Hunter?
Just a thought that we really need to put that out to parents that our summer slide is as worse or worse than any other district in the area. They have some responsibility on that.
Yeah. I think, you know, just, and it doesn't have to be anything huge. I would, if you're going to do anything, read with your kids at night. Have kids, as they get older, they have time for them to read themselves. And, and doing it based off of the activities you do and some, it doesn't need to be where they're sitting and working in a workbook for hours on end, right? But just engaging in the skills that they're ending their school, school year with throughout the summer. So that way they can start off where they left.
Thank you, Hunter. I, I, I just feel, one, one last thing. A great job communicating the successes that we've had this year. And by far the most amount of reports on student data, I, because I went back, I'm thought about the whole school year and I went back and looked at the minutes for the school year. And we've had way more information on data this year and it, it seems valid to me. It seems like we're getting good reports and good data, especially as we see that those yellow and red bars get smaller and smaller over the school year. So great job communicating that success and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And just so I'm clear, to make sure that Hunter and I plan for next year, one of the requests from you is to, to look at a cohort as they move through our system? Is that something you have an interest in? Zach?
That would be great. Yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you.
That'll be Hunter's PhD work.
Yeah, there you go. Got through the year. So we'll work on that next year.
Good, good. All right. We'll move on now to the budget update. And this is from Chris this morning.
All right. I'd like to start out with the last slide and I'm just going to speak to it at this time about budget timeline. Just to kind of give the board an awareness or reminder about where we're at with our budget process for 25, 26. As a reminder, back in December of 24, that's really when we dive in on a typical year. And I put together the initial enrollment projections, staffing projections. Several conversations first, one-on-one with Kevin to walk through the information, get his input, get his, any modifications that he wants to make and then running it through our cabinet. And then that all happens in December. January, we dive in. The legislative session starts. We present, I present the preliminary enrollment and staffing information to our principals. We get our timeline down to start our, what we call our collaboration sessions with buildings to really start dialing in where our staffing needs to land by the end of the, the budget season. Or actually, we like to have those plans done by April, end of April. So in January, we started with our round one staffing collaboration meetings with our principals. And others that are involved in those meetings, we have obviously Kevin, our cabinet. We have our federal and state program directors there. We have all the players at the table that have a stake or responsibilities around budget. And it's important that everyone's there because we fund staff with different sources of revenue. We need to have all the players in the conversation. Principals being essential, obviously, because they are responsible to set their staffing plan for the next year. So January, we dove into that. We, in February, we continue the collaboration sessions. We bring the information to the board. For as long as I can remember, February is the month that we bring the enrollment staffing projections to the school board. At the, per the teachers collectively bargained agreement, we're required to bring and present staffing enrollment and staffing projections to our certificated staff at the next regularly scheduled staff meeting after the board receives the information. So that's typically in March. So we roll into March, we continue our collaboration sessions. This year we had minimum of three collaboration sessions with each principal. We ended up with four sessions with a few different buildings to iron out the last few kinks. And so that rolled through basically in March, we even met in April with a couple of buildings. So after that, May, May is kind of the month we dive into the MSOC budgets. And we continue to build the, what we call the salary negotiation plan and the budget on our side. And we work through our program directors and we get all that information lined out. So by the end of June or end of May this year, our goal was to have our first draft budget out of the system. Unfortunately, this year the state didn't release any of the revenue and, and tools to actually run the budget until middle of May. So that was kind of disheartening to us because we wanted to have the first budget. Actually, it was into June that we got the F-195 document. But, so we're in the process now of our reconciliation of the budget. We've got some, definitely some work to do to get to where we want to be. But we're, we feel good about it, giving you all a budget update today on a few things that we can speak about. And then July 24th, the date that we present the preliminary budget to the school board and we recommend adoption. School board obviously has a decision to make whether they adopt that evening or whether they have us come back with anything that they'd like us to work on. And we adopt the budget in August. We have to adopt it in August because the deadline is August 31st to submit to OSPI. I think my 25 years, one time we've pushed it to August once or twice. So.
Are you teaching your lessons?
Most of the time we, we adopt, the board adopts in July, which is nice. And I like the process because there's communication throughout.
I'm going to be back around 2:30 to pick up Ava and I'll put those Jeep doors back on.
Derek, you're not on mute.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I didn't feel like going to the board meeting.
I appreciate the collaboration throughout the budget.
I don't really feel like talking to those people.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So I, I just appreciate the opportunity to bring information to the board throughout the process so that the board stays in the loop, has an opportunity to collaborate with us on the information. So we feel like we're in a really good place right now. We, again, we still have work to do. We'll be working hard here in the next couple of weeks to get the budget nailed down. And then our requirement is to have the draft budget to the ESD for review by July 10th. And actually, right around that same time, we're required to have the draft budget available to the public. So we, we always meet those deadlines. We'll get there. Oops. This. Okay, minimums. Oh, 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 oh. Hunter here. My text skills. They're lacking this morning. Okay, you got it. Yeah, well, actually the first slide, that's good. Right there. We're going to start. Now we'll dive into the presentation. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up about where we're at and where we've, where we started from, what's happened since. Okay. So I just want a couple of slides on where we're at right now in the 24, 25 school year. This is the May financial status report that just, we just finalized with our county treasurer report coming in around the 10th. So this information will also come to the board and at the business meeting at the end of the month. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on where we're at right now. So you'll see on this summary page, which you see every month, that at the end of May, we're 75% through the school year. We've received 71.3% of our revenues and 72, we've expended 72.3% of our budgeted appropriations. Our ending fund balance at this point in time is just over $10 million. Just as a reminder to the board, a year ago in May, May 2024, our fund balance was a little over $11 million. So we're down about a million dollars, which as a reminder, when we adopted, when you adopted the budget last year, we predicted a $1.3 million hit to our fund balance with our budget. So we've, we're about a million down right now. We're projecting at the end of the year to be 10.5 million. And you'll see that, dang it, why am I doing, what's going on? Oh, I thought you had to click on the right. Yeah, I need. Okay. So I gotta click on, okay, perfect. So as a reminder. So as a reminder, okay, so talking about projected ending fund balance, you'll see here at the top, April thirtieth, our fund balance, always a high fund, higher fund balance in April because of our tax collections, our L E A collections that month, we were at eleven point five million. Projected revenues from May through August are here. Projected expenditures are here, May through August. So we're looking at about ten point five million as an ending fund balance, which is fifteen point five four percent. As a reminder, we landed at the end of last school year at eighteen point seven percent on our fund balance. So we are looking at a drop as we planned. We, we ended last year at eleven point six million. We projected a one point three million dollar hit to our fund balance in the budget for this year. So that would land about ten point three. So we're going to be in that range of where we anticipated our ending fund balance to be. So we're, I mean, obviously, we don't like to see a big hit to our fund balance, but we're where we projected based on our budget last year or this year that we, that you all adopted. Any questions on that, on where we're at right now? All right. I think I got it. Okay, legislative. So today, what I'd like to provide the board is just an overview of the twenty five session legislative impacts that are going to be a factor in our twenty five, twenty six budget. So that's really what I wanted to focus on. At the end of the, the last few slides are just where we're looking to recommend a budget for our other funds, not the general fund. We're not ready to present the general fund yet. So these are the kind of the key areas, K twelve compensation, material supplies and operating costs, special education, transitional kindergarten and levy and levy equalization. So those are kind of the key, key buckets where legislative impacts come into play. So K twelve compensation, I think everybody knows the I P D came in at two point five percent. And what that means is the state funds us an average salary for all of the different classifications, our certificated staff, teachers and such, our administrative staff and our classified staff. So in twenty four, twenty five, this, it was seventy eight thousand two oh nine that they funded per funded F T E for teaching, one sixteen for administrative and fifty six for classified. So they're looking at a two point five percent increase to those numbers at eighty thousand, one eighteen and fifty seven. Just a reminder to you all, they when they went away from the staff mix factor, and I won't get into it, they went to an average salary for all districts. Some districts win and some districts lose. Districts that have a senior staff lose because we're only funded eighty thousand dollars, say, for our teachers, but our average teacher salary is ninety five thousand. We're not alone. A lot of districts are in this situation. Some districts that have a very early or young, not young, but novice staff that are lower on the salary schedule, then they may win on that. And again, these are, this is the funding just for basic education, not for all of our categorical programs. So then administrative and classified, there's different, more than one salary schedule, so I didn't put all the averages down. But we, we have a gap in funding in all of our classifications, administrative, certified and classified. So it makes it more difficult to, you know, balance your budget when you're not getting enough funding for your staff. M SOCs. So M SOCs, we're a little disappointed when the legislature ended this year with M SOCs only seeing just a slight increase in funding. This is one of the, was the legislative priorities out there to with all of our associations to get more money, our insurance costs, our utilities and everything that goes along with that are increasing at a much higher rate than our funding that's coming in. So it just makes it difficult. So here you can see we, they increased the allocation from fifteen thirty three oh two or just fifteen thirty three to sixteen fourteen on per F T E, per student F T E. So that's eighty one dollars increase per F T E and M SOCs. We got a slight increase in our nine through twelve as well, in addition to that of four dollars and sixty nine cents, which doesn't amount to much, but total increase to the district for M SOCs is two hundred and eighty five thousand there at the top of the slide. So that rolls into our funding that helps us balance our budget. Okay. Special education. So this has been a priority for quite some time. Many districts, most districts do not balance with their state special ed program because we don't have a choice on whether to serve students and per I E P. So districts end up having to spend money to do this and we don't have a choice. So the, the funding's always been insufficient for our special education program and it's not, we're not alone in Cila, it's across the state. They did make an effort to, to increase funding. So what they did is they eliminated the multiple tiers. I won't get into all the details on that and went to a single factor, which did generate additional funding for Cila. They also decided to take a, a small percentage of the total funding in the state and use it for research on inclusionary practices and different things that they're utilizing for that, that for on the state level. They eliminated the funding cap. So the funding cap of sixteen percent, that used to be the maximum funding cap. Now they don't have a funding cap. For Cila, it doesn't matter. We're only at twelve percent. So we don't even come close to the funding cap. So it, that doesn't help us with additional funding and allow services for a student who turns twenty two until the end of the school year. So that's, that's a new requirement as well. Basic ed allocation. So this is one. Remember, special needs students are basic ed students first, and then we serve additional needs. So we always, the state has always had in their formula that a certain percentage of basic ed funds get funneled into special ed because we need to provide the additional services for those kids. So for Cila, the way that it calculated in the past was seventeen to nineteen percent, most recently nineteen percent that was used in the calculation to drive excess cost funds for special ed. Now they've capped it at twenty five percent or they've made it twenty five percent across all districts. So nobody, you don't have an individualized percentage. So that's an additional six percent that comes out of basic ed that goes into special ed for Cila. So some districts are in the opposite position, but we, we actually are needing to put in more money. So you'll see that on the far right with the calculations. So twenty four, twenty five funding, our state special ed funding was five point four million. And then the excess cost allocation was seven hundred and seventy five thousand, so six point two million. For twenty five, twenty six, and I'm, and I'm, I'm looking at budget twenty four, twenty five to budget twenty five, twenty six. The actual funding for sped this current school year is a little higher because we're serving more students than what we budgeted. So that's, but I wanted to be apples to apples. So twenty five, twenty six, we're looking at five point seven million for state special ed money and the excess cost allocation of just under a million dollars. So there's about two hundred thousand dollars more that the basic ed side's putting into the special ed budget for the following school year, using the same enrollment projection. But so the increase, total increase, when you're looking budget to budget is about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for sped. So tha- that's a good thing. We, we can utilize those funds definitely to help support those, our students with special needs.
That's just revenue, no expenses described in.
Yeah, no, no expenses. We, every, you know, we'll, we'll present that when we have our budget presentation. So that's the, the impact on the legislative for special ed funding. TK. So TK, what the decision was is to cap where every district was. So if you had four TK classrooms with so many students, they capped you at that for the twenty five, twenty six. We have one TK classroom in Cila. And so we will continue with one TK classroom. Our interest is to to get eighteen kids in this, in the class. But if we get sixteen, seventeen kids, we'll be good with, with funding. But we can't have more than that, more than TK, one, more than one TK classroom for next school year, which is what we have this year. So.
Those are certificated positions. Is that correct?
It can, it's both, it's the funding part. So for us, it funds a teacher and a para. If we cap, if we get eighteen in the class and a very small portion of, of admin, like hardly anything, but so it works for us. It's not part of the basic, you'll see here, they, they're not calling, it's not part of basic education. The funding is separate from our normal basic education funding. It's all state funding now. It was federal and state. It's all state funding. But it's, it's separate from the, the normal way that we get our funding for K through twelve. Okay. Levy and L E A, bottom line, they've got, you'll see there the description of the, the changes and impacts from the legislative session. For us, just based on what we passed by voters and the legislation change, we are increasing the levy revenue by four hundred and fifty thousand to next year. So that's an increase. L E A is actually, we're looking at a decrease of a hundred thousand dollars. So that's what our projected numbers are. All right. So any questions on the legislative impacts? Okay, so the last things I would just wanted to highlight are the other funds, and these are the draft budgets for our other funds. Remember our operating fund being the general fund. We're waiting on that to present next in July. But the other funds, we thought that we could just give you a heads up on where we're at with those. So starting with debt service fund, you can see here at the, we're projecting at the end of this school year, August thirty one, we'll have fifty five point nine million outstanding debt with our bonds. You can see the payoff numbers. I'm kind of behind on my slides, aren't I? Okay, so you'll see here that the payoff on the two thousand eighteen bonds is twenty forty two and the payoff on the twenty two bonds is twenty thirty six. So twenty thirty six is the first bonds that pay off and then the second, the two thousand eighteen bonds pay off in twenty forty two. We have an outstanding balance at the end of this school year at fifty five point nine million. And if you look at our budget for this coming school year, we're projecting one point five million dollar ending fund balance at the end of this current school year. We have projected taxes coming in, four point one million. You can see there, so total revenues budgeted at four point one million for twenty five, twenty six and projected expenditures, four point two million, and that's principal and interest payments on our debt. So projected any fund balance of one point, just under one point four million. And that's typically what we, we roll with every year is about one point two to one point four million in this fund. We can't try to build the fund up. That's, we try to just collect taxes and pay the principal and interest. That's what the goal is of this, this fund. All right, transportation vehicle. I know that's hard to see. We're projecting an ending fund balance at this current school year of two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. We're looking at interesting or investment income and depreciation, depreciation around two hundred and fifty thousand. Remember, our buses are on a depreciation schedule. So this fund, the revenue that comes in is investment earnings and depreciation on our current buses. That's why we, we want, one of the reasons we want to keep up on our fleet of buses. The other reason we want reliable buses, but we want to keep so many buses on the depreciation schedule so that we have a constant and continual funding source to buy new buses moving forward. So we're looking at building capacity there, four hundred and fifty thousand for one big bus, one small bus. And with an in projected ending fund balance of a hundred and ten thousand. The other thing that's out there that the, the that landed in the legislative session this year, that's not totally approved at this point, is buying motor pool, like types of vehicles with the depreciation and getting depreciation back on those vehicles. So like, say, if we needed to buy some vehicles to, we have a pretty high number of McKinney Vento students that we're transporting now that are kind of one offs, that we have different people running. We could have some, some vehicles to do that along with the other needs for motor pool. But at this point, we're not, it's not going to be, I think, finalized until twenty twenty seven, something like that. So, so that's a T V F fund. Cap projects. You can see here, as you all know, the two big projects that are upcoming are turf field on the high, at the high school and the C T E addition and partially being the C T E addition, partially being funded by the Wilbur rep donation. So those are the, the ones you're gonna, really will be focusing on in the capital projects fund. We're projecting an ending fund balance just under seven point five million at the end of this school year. We're looking at, and non bond funds in that is five point eight million and leftover state match is one point six million. So it's seven point five million for an ending fund balance, looking at investment income. And actually, the transfer from the general fund, I need to update that. That's, we've now, during our reconciliation process, have wiped that out. We're not going to recommend a transfer just to help us with, to balance a budget. So I, I should update this, updated this slide. So the capacity for non bond projects is one point three million and capacity for bond projects is three million, and I'll get to that list here shortly. So looking at an ending fund balance of just under three point nine million, which will be four point three million without the transfer. Okay, the next slide is the list of projects. So basically, our C T E addition will be funded with Wilbur rep funds and also some other leftover state match. This year, it, the focus for twenty five, twenty six is the turf field. The majority of the work on the turf field is twenty five, twenty six, the C T E addition, the construction and a, and a bulk of that project will be done the following school year, twenty six, twenty seven. But there will still be some stuff going on in between. So the cash flow produces this much. We probably won't spend nine hundred thousand in twenty five, twenty six on the C T E addition, but building capacity, capacity to, to get the work done that needs to be done before they really dive into the construction. And like I said, under the bond projects, leftover state match money will be used to put the turf in. And then the other projects I have listed there, the five hundred thousand is just capacity, three hundred thousand above is just capacities, building in additional capacity in case we ended up getting ahead of schedule and spending more on those projects.
Chris, the first four or five, I guess, three or four things on that list, the painting classrooms, bathrooms, parking lot striping. Those are all pretty common things that stuff like that we do every single year. And that's a process of probably Frank and his staff and then reporting you and says, here's what needs to be done in order to keep us. And then that also ends up showing up on some of the building audits and all that kind of stuff down the road.
Exactly. And we, and Frank has done a really nice job with that. We did, we went through a cycle rotation at the high school. We upgraded the bathrooms. We did paint and carpet in classrooms. We, you know, really did our due diligence there to keep that building in good shape. And that is our priority to keep our facilities in the best shape we can so that they last longer. It's now where it's going through a process with C I S. Again, it kind of goes in a rotation. C I S is the next one. So we've been painting, already started painting. So we'll be, those will be on a rotation for classrooms and then bathroom upgrades as well. So the next probably three years, we'll have those budgeted each year to get through all of them for C I S to keep that building up as well. So good question. Thank you. Any other questions on the other funds? Okay, we talked about timeline. Any questions about the timeline?
It looks like we'll get the, at the next, at the, at the board meeting at the end of the month. Is that when we get the budget? Or is it in August?
We, the July, July business meeting, July twenty fourth is when we'll come back and present the preliminary budget to the board. The, we decided to do the budget update this meeting instead of the end of June because we have a lot of other reports at the end of the, end of June.
Great.
At the end of June, we'll have the general fund update in it, right? Part of the July meeting.
If there's a short, possibly a short update, we'll talk, I'll talk to Kevin and see what he wants me to do on that. Otherwise, it'll come back in July. All right. Other questions?
I think, I think, thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate.
No, I just want to see if you could.
It's not very nice. Everyone knows how good I am on computer. I was so glad Hunter started. He had to deal with.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chris. All right. So yes, we've been very data centric today. I appreciate that. There's nothing from the superintendent this morning, no executive session is necessary. I, I just, well, maybe, maybe I'll, no, I'll, I'll say it now. So I'm, I'm, I was, as I mentioned, looking back over the school year and reflecting on what we've, what we've accomplished as a district this year, and especially what the board has been presented with. And I just, I've just got a couple of quick bullet points to kind of. And I just, I've just got a couple of quick bullet points to kind of think about trends, but also to congratulate the district on a lot of their accomplishments. So one of the things that jumped out at me is the Viking Promise 2.0, the work that we've done there. These are kind of the big picture things. Long-range facilities resulting in CTE building that we just heard about and upgrades to the, to the athletic field, long-waited upgrades to athletic field. The budget continues to be steady. Enrollment was just about right on, a little bit under projections, but right where we want it to be. CTE expansion in the middle school, CTE in the high school, number one in the state for CTE and dual credit, which is absolutely incredible. A CWU wild, Viking to Wildcat pipeline that is unique to SELA. I'm sure they're trying to expand that to other places, but we're way out in front of things on that. 94% graduation rate. As we mentioned, great statistics on, on reading from the testing point of view and on behavior overall. Implementation of the since-time immemorial curriculum this year, which, this has taken us all the way back to the beginning of last year. Successful defense of library books being available to students. Boy, just a, a lot of excellent work done by the district this year and I'm proud to be on the school board, to be representing the citizens and to be working with the, with everybody here in the school district. So thank you for a great school year and I'm looking forward to continuing the work this summer and next year as well. Any other comments? Is it good to the order?
I'd like your little add-on at the end of the presentation where we go through the data that's very overwhelming and then the last slide that talks about where the students are headed and how we have kind of prepared them for success. So that was, that was a good add-on to that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Great. Thank you very much. We will adjourn the meeting.